Welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting, virtual meeting of Thursday, August 20th, 2020. In keeping with the ongoing emergency order from Governor Charlie Baker to limit gatherings and maximize social distancing, and under legislation passed to address remote board meetings during the emergency declaration, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. If you'd like to ask a question, you can type it into the Q and A and we'll get to it as appropriately necessary. And please give your name and address as you ask a question. We are also on Eat Cat and Facebook Live, hopefully. Thank you to Joe and Lynn for being here to help us with our meeting. And I think that is it. All right. Our agenda changed a bit, so what I'm going to do is make a motion to enter into executive session and we will return to open session for the purpose of discussion, discussion of strategy with respect to collective bargaining in Unit A. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. And also having it early, having this discussion in executive session early may have some input or information for items later on in the meeting. So I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Chair, I'm sorry, pardon me. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think it's important to note that it was posted in less than 48 hours because of information you received that it wasn't reasonable for you to post it before that.
I meant, I meant to say that, I'm sorry. Yes, we just got word about this negotiation and it is very important with the timeframe that we're in. It's already August 20th, so this was, and our lawyer said it was okay that we do this. Is that correct, Dr. Cabral?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Wiseman's second.
All right. All those in favor of going into executive session?
O'Neil, yes?
Yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Okay, may I ask, may I ask Chair DeLuca? I think we were sent a separate link, is that correct? But it's not in the packet?
No, go to your email, go to your email. You just got it. Go to your email, click on it. Okay. Jen, did you say yes?
You were muted.
Oh, sorry, star, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
We will be back as quick as can be. Thank you. We'll be right back.
Well, in a, whenever. Not right back.
I am, thank you.
Nancy, is Nancy here yet?
Hold on. Nancy's in the other, let me just promote her.
I'm here, Caroline.
Yes.
The troublemaker, the troublemaker's here. Okay, I'm gonna mute myself though.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, everyone's here, it looks like.
All right, welcome back to the Eastern School Committee meeting of Thursday, August 20th. If you do have a question for the Q and A, please write your name, type your name and your address and ask your question. The next item up for discussion is the approval of the Lucini bus contract. And I'm gonna make a motion to, I don't think it's a motion, I'm gonna put this to the next meeting. Do I need approval?
Yes, you need a motion.
So I'm gonna make a motion to move item two to the next meeting.
O'Neal second.
All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes.
Francie, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks very much. Number three, review and possible vote to accept policy EBCFA face covering second reading, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you, so the MASC or the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC, occasionally will come out with policies that they recommend to school committees in Massachusetts. So you as such received guidance from them suggesting a mask, M-A-S-K, or face covering policy. You brought that before the last meeting for a first reading. You then were, shared that document with the nursing staff of Eastern Public Schools who gave you some, I believe gave you some feedback on that, and so now you are going to take a look at the feedback, take a look at the policy. This is your second reading and determine if it is ready for a vote or not to become a school committee policy.
Susan Mail and the other nurses did send the new, their, their version of the face covering policy. And when I was at the meeting yesterday, what they did is kinda combined things and squished it down a little bit. So I don't know if you like one more than another, do you wanna, you know, change anything? And we'll take some discussion right now. Go ahead, Jackie.
I like how they revised it, it is, it's a little simpler. I think the one thing that it, we do need to do is we need to just put in something about, you know, looking at the, the, not the policy, but the, what is it, that the schools put into place, remember how we were gonna refer to the-
Oh, the guidelines?
The guidelines, right, I just couldn't think of the word. Something to that effect, but I, I just, I think it's kind of cleaner, simpler, I don't know what everyone else thinks.
And, and the, that's true, the other thing that is very recognizable in this is that the MASC was grade one and below, but the nurses are, everybody wears a mask, every single person. Little ones, staff, everybody.
I totally agree, yep, I agree a hundred percent.
Right.
And I did ask, just as a follow-up, if there were certain types of, of face coverings that we should either not allow or recommend against, or have, you know, guidelines about. And I think Colleen, one of the nurses, sent a, a link to an article on that, which had kind of a chart about which face coverings were the most effective. I don't know if you all got to look at that, but I, I don't know whether you want to incorporate this into this, or have that not, or have it in the guidelines, or what, what you feel about that.
Yeah, I, I noticed that the, the link that she sent was from June, and I believe that there has been updated research that has been released very recently that might offer some stronger arguments for using a specific style of mask, or limiting, you know, neckerchiefs, bandanas, that kind of thing, gaiters, et cetera. So I know Caroline, I, I feel like this is in your wheelhouse, I know you're, you're up on all of our research.
Well, unfortunately, I didn't have the time I wanted to have today to go over the nurses recommended. So I actually was leaning more toward the original sample, but with the changes that we had suggested last time. So I didn't have time to kind of figure out how to get those into the nurses recommended policy. But yes, I think guidelines are the way to go for things like, we can change the guidelines anytime, we can put that on an agenda. I think that having a really strong, not only what kind of materials that, you know, are appropriate for masks, but also some kind of strong statement about, well, you know, are we going to have the thing about every child, that's in our guidelines or whatever, not in our guidelines, in the things that the policy has sent out, every child will have two, two masks, they'll bring, do we have that in the, they'll each have two masks, they bring one, an extra one to school that's in a Ziploc bag, do we have all of that?
In the plan, the plan asks-
That's in the plan, right?
The plan asks for multiple masks so that they can clean properly.
Right, right, and they're in Ziploc bags and all that stuff, so that's-
No, no, no. The newsletter that the nurses sent out this past week had tips for masks that included tips about putting things in Ziploc bags and so forth.
Okay, this is all, like, pulled into my, you know, it's like all combined in my brain. So I think things like that would be a good part of the guidelines, even if you make it a recommendation in the guidelines.
Right.
Because if, I think all of these things about masks should be kind of in one place, and this seems like the policy with the guidelines seems to be, that'll be on the website, I think we can put it as a priority on the website, you know, that type of thing.
I put it into the plan, the, the, the key that you're clearly understanding is that we want the policy to be overarching, and the guidelines to be something that we can tweak and be nimble with to make sure that we don't have to wait two months to have something change, if we have different medical information about the integrity of certain masks, or something of that nature. If it's a guideline, we can change it at any time, those are the very, very specifics, like whether you put it in a Ziploc bag or not. You know how quickly things are changing, they could determine, all of a sudden, that's not healthy for some reason. We don't wanna wait two months to, to change that. So those, really, the minutia of that and how we recommend people do things, that is more, that's more properly suited to a guideline. In fact, some guidelines may be different for different grade levels. So you may even have different guidelines for each school. So it's appropriate for you to, to adopt a policy like this that gives, you know, the fact that they need to wear them, that they need to be worn in a certain way, that they need to be of a certain quality. And then the guidelines then give much more detailed information for parent use, student use, staff use, and for individual buildings, that can be changed to suit the medical information at, at the day. Because, of course, we're trying to stay on top of that, and we're paying attention to that every day, and we wanna make decisions that are going to help the students and the staff the very next day of school.
I, I did have a couple of other questions, though, about the nurses' version. You know, we had kind of put in red as, as something to think about, adding that the 12 feet of distance under certain circumstances, instead of, now, I know it says here, when appropriate social distancing is, and face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced. I think that people could get confused if we don't specifically spell out what that distancing is. I mean, I, I've seen at least three more articles since I talked about this last week, that is saying that the aerosol that is emitted by people that are infected can travel easily as, as far as 14 feet, and it can remain in the air for quite some time. So I, I think, first of all, I would personally like, this is just me, something, at least in the guidelines, but maybe even in the policy, a statement that mask breaks would only be possible outdoors. It's pretty clear from having read about masks, done, done some more reading about mask breaks, is that there's really no way, even with six-foot distancing, to make mask breaks safe, entirely safe indoors. I mean, it's probably never going to be entirely safe to do anything with this virus anywhere, even as somebody pointed out in our own homes. But I, I feel pretty strongly that mask breaks could be a challenge, I mean, I know that, could that be in the guidelines, something about the mask breaks and how we handle them and what, I mean, there may be circumstances indoors.
No, it certainly can, it's just that, again, if you get new information about that, it's going to take you a couple of months to change it, if you need to. We can certainly add it to the guidelines, yes.
Right, that, I'm sorry, yeah, I think if we put it in the guidelines, I, I do think, I mean, I don't mean to be difficult here, I've just really immersed myself in this particular issue. And I just, you know, basically, so many epidemiologists have said, the key to keeping schools safe is masks, that's the, I mean, not the only key, but probably the most important key. So that's why I'm, I'm so driven to, to all this research. And so I apologize for creating more challenges here. But, okay, could we, will we be part of developing the guidelines then in a separate meeting? I mean, how will that occur?
Well, the guidelines are gonna be part of the school building plans, and we are running all of the plans by all of you. So you'll have them in the building plans.
They'll be in the building plans, but the guidelines also need to be attached to the policy. I mean, that's usually what we do, we have guidelines, it's like in the next page of the policy, that the guideline, you know, we can refer in the policy to guidelines, but we need to have the guidelines kind of as an attachment, at least in the next few weeks, you know, as soon as we can.
Plans are gonna be out on the 27th, so it will be after that, but-
Yeah, right, okay.
You can always put in the policy and add the guidelines, we do that all the time.
Okay, 'cause I, I think some other people have mentioned things they thought would be well-placed in the guidelines also. And typically, the guidelines do kind of attach to the policies, so, okay.
Not at the time of the voting of the policy?
No, 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 I know, I meant eventually, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I wasn't being very clear. But I know, for example, when we did the concussion policy and things like that, there were other, there was additional information, also known as guidelines in most cases, that were, was attached to the policy, but that took a lot longer to develop, well, not a lot longer, but somewhat longer to develop, so, yeah, I agree. Do you think, though, that, okay, so the one question I have about the nurse, one question I have left about the boarding of the nurses' policy proposal is during physical education classes at the discretion of the PE teacher? I would really like to see something that, I think that's, our PE teachers are not epidemiologists, they're not scientists, they're not, I mean, I think that's, I, I think they're very reliable and they will focus on safety and so on, but I, I really do feel that unless something's being done outdoors, it's going to be very difficult to create enough distance indoors. So I don't, I think that that's something that we really have to work on quickly. I mean, I'm okay with leaving this in the policy if we quickly develop guidelines around PE.
But we can change that one.
I'm sorry, Nancy, what?
You don't have to vote on the policy this evening, either.
No, I think we should.
The other thing I was gonna say is during physical education classes, 12 feet apart, and at the discretion, like, just add in that 12 feet apart that's on the, the MASC policy, just, is, would that be all right?
During physical education classes, when 12-foot distancing is possible, or something like that, or when, when 12, I mean, we do have appropriate social distancing.
It says 12 feet apart. On the MASC, it says 12 feet apart.
Well, that's, that's something we add, we added that, didn't we, last time? Oh, it does say 12 feet apart on MASC, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought, because it was in red on mine, it looked like we had added that as an edit, so I-
But, but I think that's, that's the point, though, if the information keeps changing, like, maybe in a month, they're gonna say 12 feet isn't good enough, you need 14, or maybe 12 feet is too much, you need eight. If we leave it a little more general in the policy and then tweak the, the guidelines, that might, you know, give us a little more flexibility with that.
Yeah, I, I, I like that, I just, I think that if, if I were a PE teacher, I wouldn't want this to be under my discretion, I would want to have firm guidelines that I need to follow and, and can, you know, iterate and enforce with my students. So I would suggest that we just strike the, at the discretion of the PE teacher, and then handle in the guidelines the more specific info that the teachers will need.
As I mentioned last week, I, I'm not entirely sure that for every sport, you couldn't also wear masks. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I understand that's not as comfortable to do a sport, I, hockey, I know, I know. Hockey's not probably that realistic, although, I don't know, I kind of envision hockey games with masks. But I do think, I mean, I've talked to parents whose kids play baseball, softball, et cetera, they're wearing masks. I mean, they're, you know, so I do think where you can, for both sports and physical education, it may be possible to wear, really, quite, quite possible to wear masks. So I, I kind of don't like the idea of having a policy that essentially officially excuses ma, or, or, you know, makes mask wearing unnecessary. I, I, I'm not sure that it makes sense to do that. I mean, I, even the supervised mask breaks, as I said, I really think in the guidelines very quickly that should say that they really can only be outside, I mean, I, I just-
So can it say something like face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is, is enforced pursuant to the attached guidelines, or something like that? So it's immediately referring to those guidelines.
Right, okay, that sounds good. I mean, they won't be attached right away, but that's a good idea. Okay, I'm not, I'm not meaning to be difficult here, I'm just really, I'm very passionate about our ability to have schools be open. And I think masks, as I said, are a critical component, so I don't mean to be, I, I know I'm being picky, but I think if there were ever a time to be picky, this is, this is that time.
And I think we're all on the same page with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Does this policy and/or the guidelines cover athletics?
It can.
We, what do we all think?
Don't forget that MIAA is going to be coming out with information about that as well.
Right.
MIAA, though, is not, I, I mean, so can they determine exactly what kinds of actions we take for each sport? I mean, is that, is that a-
No, but they may, they can make recommendations that you can then consider.
Right, right. We may need a, it's possible we'll need a separate sports policy, because there's so many sports in there, you know, as everybody knows, they've already, the state has already rated the sports in terms of, and actually, CDC has too, I believe, in terms of sort of level of risk and that kind of thing. So it's gonna require some study and obviously significant input from our athletic director. So I would think that maybe will require a separate school committee policy to make, to give it sort of, you know, enforcement, a possibility of enforcement. But, because MIAA, it's like you said, it's guidance, so I'm not sure that it's, it, it has that.
Well, maybe, maybe we can, we can, once we see it, you know, particularly the face covering, I know that there'll be lots of other aspects of athletics, but maybe in, in particular with face covering, just so that there's no kind of question as to where it fits. Maybe we could incorporate the MIAA guidelines if we think that they are adequate in with the guidelines that we attach to this. Maybe, let's, I guess we can figure that out when we see them. Or incorporate them by reference, or, you know.
That's a good idea, sometimes the guidelines we've gotten with policies have been like three pages long. I mean, they've been, you know, because they're so specific, you know, it's really the details for the policy. So I think that's a good suggestion to wait until we see the MIAA, their final recommendations, so, okay.
We do have a question in the Q and A around mask breaks.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
Lauren Loomis for Abbey Road, can mask breaks be permissible within a classroom, staggering students for their breaks at different times, maybe just nose exposed? In the plan right now, it says that if a mask break is taken indoors, it has to be in a well-ventilated area with windows open. And ob, obviously distancing, and it could be staggered as well.
Well, they are gonna be eating in the classrooms as well, which means the masks are off.
And you're gonna have inclement weather.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding was that, you know, with the six feet apart, facing the same direction, that brief times with the mask off for eating or drinking and/or a mask break would be relatively lower on the risk scale than, you know, just having people in the same space, willy-nilly with no masks on. But.
And I do think the plan is to keep all the windows open whenever possible, even in the colder weather.
All right, so coming down to these two policies, do you, do you like what, do you like the nurse one over the MASC one? Do we wanna vote today, do we wanna wait, do we want to wait and see what the guidelines are to go along with this? What do you wanna do?
Well, I think we'd take some time to develop the guidelines, but we, we are having meeting quite quickly, next, really, in five days, so, five or six days, so maybe it does make sense to put a little bit more, I don't know, I, I'm certainly willing to vote tonight, I don't wanna- I don't know, I, I'm cer- certainly willing to vote tonight, I don't wanna, um. Delay it if other people wanna vote tonight, but I just.
Alright, so how many of you like the nurse po, just raise your hand, nurse policy? And how many of you like the MASC policy? Nobody likes anything, okay.
But I like the nurse policy, but think it needs, it needs some further modifications.
Yeah, that's kind of where I am, yeah.
Alright, so we're not, so we're not gonna vote on a face policy, face covering policy tonight, we'll do it at our next meeting, okay?
Or maybe should we do it, um, if the god, if the, the building level plans are coming out the twenty seventh? Should we vote on this maybe after that?
The only thing is, well, everybody, I mean, I would assume that all the parents and staff, I mean. You can't go anywhere without wearing a mask, so.
Yeah, are we required to have this in place before people return to the buildings?
Well, I, I would think we need to.
No, we, we have back-to-school guidelines that include that people have to wear masks, so. You will have it in place, I, I would think you would have it in place before students return.
Yeah, that's the key.
But staff is, staff has, is getting guidelines for return to work that include that a mask has to be worn at all times. With mask breaks, of course.
Right, and, and it's not an issue of enforcement for the staff, so, I mean, you know, we have the. The aspect that parents cannot exempt students from wearing masks other than for medical reasons, so I think that, um. It makes sense that as long as we have this in place before students come into the building. That should be sufficient.
So, on the nurse one, the only, uh, correction, there's three things, first of all, the title should be face coverings.
Right.
Halfway down the page, face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced. Pursuant to the guidelines, and then the, the third bullet, during physical education classes. And then, uh, delete from at to teacher, and that's what I have for corrections on the nurse one.
But did we wanna just eliminate the three bullet points?
Really?
And then have it.
Oh, pursuant to the guidelines?
Yeah, and then have the specifics of mask breaks, eating, drinking, and PE spelled out there, or? Do we wanna have those at least mentioned here?
I would want them at least mentioned here, okay. Caroline, what do you think?
Still stuck on those mask breaks, so I'll just go along with the crowd.
Do you wanna say face covering breaks?
Oh, no, no, I don't, it's not the word, it's not the word mask that I'm, it's the word breaks. Difficulty with, not mask, no, I, I understand that I'm just a, an outlier here.
Okay, so those are my, those are the three corrections on the nurse one, does anybody want to? I mean, I'm in favor of the nurse one, I think they kind of put it all together really well from the. From the, um, MASC one, so up to you guys, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna vote, do, Jackie, did you have a question? No, okay.
Oh, actually Nancy, I'm just looking at that paragraph, if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will. Consult with the parent guardian to determine whether an ex, exception is documented. It says, or the student may be removed from the building for in-person learning, I think that we're saying, since. They can't be waived by parents, they should be, I don't, I don't, I know our principals can be very kind-hearted. But we're talking about the safety of the entire group.
There are exceptions to wearing a mask, so that, that's how I interpreted it, that they. They have one of those documented exceptions already.
No, it, it says, if, it, it says or, so it says, it's the or that I'm stuck on. If students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parent guardian to determine whether an exception is documented, so obviously if it's. Documented, that's okay, but then it says, or the student may be removed. You mean, okay, so if it's not doc, I think it almost is a two sentences, if there is no documented exception. The student will be removed until such time as they can comply with the requirement or.
And that's taken right from the MASC policy.
I know, I didn't notice, no, no, I know, I just didn't notice.
There is a slight difference, the MASC policy doesn't say documented, it says whether an exception is appropriate.
I'm talking about the second part that Caroline's talking about.
Okay.
No, no, I know, I know that it's the same, I'm just, I'm just looking at it more closely now, because it almost. It almost implies that there's an option for the student not to be removed, even if there is no documented, um, exception. In other words, this, you know, the parent could plead with the principal, just say, my, my kid hates masks and. Could he please stay, and, I mean, technically, the principal then would be on the spot. I feel like it should be clear that the student can't be in the building if there's no documented exception. I, I, you know, at that point, if the, if the student comes in without, um, I don't know.
Caroline, I, I agree with you.
I mean, I, I know it's the MASC, I just didn't pick up on this before, and I'm sorry, I just missed it, but I feel like the or allows.
Well, the other thing too, if you wanna get into that paragraph. If a student's in violation, then the principal and/or the nurse should know if there's documentation. And if there isn't, either give the kid a mask and say, go back to class, or call the parent, you're going home, that's it. You gotta wear a mask, period, unless you're documented. So I know the wording is weird, I think the message is, wear a mask.
No, you're right, because the policy is that only a documented, do we have that elsewhere, though? I mean, do we have to say?
Up above.
Student wouldn't be in violation of the policy.
Exactly, no, that's a good point Nancy, that, that's, that whole paragraph is a little bit confusing, right?
But it's almost the same one as the MASC one, so I don't know, you know, what.
Well, we're allowed to change, the MASC may not be, you know, they probably kind of put it together to the best of their ability too, but it's really easy. To miss, um, but the implication, you're exactly right, it's, it's not a violation if there's a documented medical exception, so, um.
You could end the sentence after documented and then write if no documented exception is found, or whatever the wording is, the student. Parents guardians will be contacted to remove this, I mean, we can work on the wording a little bit.
This is just for someone who's refusing to wear a mask, right, obviously, if they don't have a mask. That's.
Well, we'll provide a mask. Right, that's fine.
Does it say that, though, does it say?
No, we should add that in, yeah. Yeah, it does say, it does say that we will, that we will provide a mask, um. That, that, you know, families are expected to provide them, but we will provide one if they don't have one. Yeah, right above that, the district will have disposable face coverings if individuals arrive at a building or board school transportation without one. Or if the integrity of the face covering is in jeopardy.
So this is just for anyone that's refusing to put one on?
Yeah, so maybe we could just clearly state that, if students refuse to wear a mask in the absence of a documented exemption.
Students and adults, or students, or?
It says, if stu, if students are in violation of this policy, which means if they're not following what they're supposed to do.
But can we say will be instead of maybe?
Yes, we need, that, that's kind of the point, is we need to say they will be, because may is just to, uh, it's left up in the air. Right, it comes, and, and I honestly, I don't wanna even put that burden on principals to have to have that, you know. Please, please, you know, that conversation with parents, I mean, they just need to be able to say it's school committee policy, it's out of my hands. And that protects the principal from having to, you know, go to a great deal of trouble, like kind of negotiating with the parents.
It does speak to, it's, it's violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy.
Oh, that's good, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So change the word may to will, and the other one above pursuant to the guidelines and face coverings. Everybody's good with this?
Okay, but how are we really writing that paragraph now, if students are in violation of this policy?
Caroline, it's all the same, except may becomes will.
I, I would suggest striking the, the, the whole section about the building principal, striking from that all the way through. Documented, and then change to the student will, if students are in violation of the policy. Students will be removed from the school building for in-person learning, blah, blah, blah.
Until such time as they can, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
And one other, one other net, um, in the third paragraph, after the word circumstances, uh, we can remove the comma.
So no comma after the word circumstances.
Yes.
Good point, I missed that too.
I got you Caroline.
I know, my game's way off here, my, my grammar game.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion to accept, uh, policy EBCFA, face coverings as corrected. Do I have a second? Uh, Chrissy, what's up, go ahead.
We have four, um, we have four questions.
Go ahead, are they all about the face coverings?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
There's, it's three questions, actually, um, actually, one is anonymous, so for somebody that did type that. We can't read anonymous, uh, questions, if you could just add your name and address, that would be great. So the first one is from Valerie Frank, one fifty-eight Elm Street. The others, the other school our older child attends has a strict no unmasked time indoors policy. Their policy was developed by five distinguished Boston doctors from BI. BMC, the Brigham and Children's Hospital, thank you Caroline for advocating for a safer mask policy. Indoor unmasked time for breaks or snacks leads to the spread of droplets, full stop. This was the deciding factor for my family in not returning to EMS. There is no amount of unmasked indoor time that is safe, not noses only, not face forward, facing forward. Not just with windows open, open, droplets can hang in the air for up to three to four hours. Easton's back-to-school plan will rise or fall based on the elimination of unmasked indoor time.
Thank you.
So apparently I have a, a partner out there, an unknown advocate. This is the kind of thing I've been reading, as I said, I'm sorry to be such a stickler on this, but. I do think that maybe we're gonna have to look at the guidelines and reconsider. Indoor mask breaks, and even, even, we may need to figure out another way for kids to eat, if, I mean, most kids initially won't be eating in the school, right? Most.
For a long time without eating, they are gonna have snacks and they are gonna have drinks, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, uh. I mean, I get that kids get hungry and stuff like that, but. I mean, she's right about the aerosol remaining in the air for an extended period of time, that's pretty new information. Uh, but it's certainly out there, it's been out there for a couple of weeks, um.
So what, but what would, so what would be an alternative? For, are the kids eating outside, is that?
I know that people, a lot of people would object to this. But I know that there are also schools, particularly in Europe, that basically say, you know, that, that old saying about there's no such thing as bad weather, there's just bad clothing. Maybe, I mean, I know that winter is coming, and, you know, we, of course, don't know how long we could even have schools open. I mean, all of this is gonna be controlled by the virus, but I, I do think that that significantly. Increases the risk, unless, I mean, maybe we can clear out, you know, we can do it in, in. Stages so that you literally have kids fourteen feet apart while they quickly grab a snack or something like that, I mean, I, I. Guess if you had some really good ventilation and you could disperse the aerosol. I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm really stuck on this, because I, I do think that, you know, Valerie's comments were helpful. And, you know, obviously, they are based on the expertise of some very well-informed medical people.
Okay, so go ahead, Chrissy, did you say there were two more questions?
Yep, Holly Butler, nine two seven Washington Street. What if it is a preschooler who will not wear the mask, would a preschooler get sent home?
She didn't come to school without a mask, you have to wear a mask.
I think the nurses have put in that, also put in the time on doing the research, and, um, you know, it's, it's the state. Mandate is two and up, age two and up, right? For masks?
Yep, second grade and up.
Oh, second, that's the state, I'm sorry, I have just switched New York City in my head. In New York City, every person aged two and up is mandated to wear a mask. But New York City's a lot bigger than we are, so they must know, you know.
Well, that's also consistent with, with god, with guidance for, you know, uh, not specific to a school setting, but in general. If you, you know, if you're at a store or any place indoors, you are expected ages two and up to be wearing a mask. Or over the age of two, uh, uh, it might be over the age of two, I don't wanna.
It is, it's, it's actually two and up, I think, I believe, at least, okay, I may be conflating New York and Massachusetts, but. But our preschoolers start at three, right, anyway, don't they?
Yep, some of them, they're, they're early childhood, yeah.
I meant, I meant, we don't really have children younger than three, do we?
I, I just, I just feel like if you're going, somebody just said it, if you're going, if you take your. Child to the ice cream stand and you're waiting in line this summer, everybody has to have a mask on. Everybody's gotta wear a mask, period.
And, and I haven't, I've been in the, the special ed and ELL, um, work, working group meetings every week, as has Caroline. And then there was the CPAC Town Hall last night, um, and I know our, our preschool director has been heavily involved. And, and I have not, I don't recall hearing, um, any concerns. About having the preschoolers all wear masks, and, and in fact, have heard. Um, quite good feedback about some of the work that's been done over the summer. Um, with the, with the, the year-round students on wearing masks and, and being taught. Um, to wear them and, and that there's been, you know, a, a, a good comfort level established.
So, okay, so you have one more, let's get to the other question, then we'll talk, go ahead.
The other question, um, is from Sher, Cheryl Sklar, seven thirty-two Washington Street. Wouldn't that be a disciplinary thing where zero tolerance would, could be implemented, refusal to wear a mask will result in dismissal for the day?
That's what, that's what this policy says, you know.
Yeah, removed from the building, that essentially, and, and yes, they can't come back unless they're in compliance.
But, so going back to like the eating and the drinking and the supervised mask breaks. I mean, I don't know if there's any answer to this, I, I mean, we're not scientists, and we do take. The, you know, if, if scientists say something about this that they know about, then we need to listen to them, but. I don't know how, you know, like if it's a, a bad day outside, how do you? Put the kids outside for a mask break or a snack or whatever?
So then maybe, maybe we should do what Jen had suggested, and then when it says face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing. And the force pursuant to the guidelines, take out those three bullet points, so that gives us more flexibility, that if we decide. Eating inside isn't safe, then that's not already in the policy, it's in the guideline and we can change it.
Yeah, and then the guidelines can get really nitty-gritty again after we see the building plans and what the people who actually need to work in the buildings. Have envisioned is workable for them and their students, um, you know, some, some buildings, it might be, you know, a teacher might have easy access. To an outdoor space, um, in, in others, maybe it's easier access to a cafeteria or a gymnasium space. Where kids can spread out a little bit more, I, I think, again, given the, the various. a little bit more. I, I think, again, given the, the various age ranges and the facilities that we have, that, you know, this, that level of detail, um, will become more clear when we can see what the plans are.
I think that most children over maybe second grade age, something like that, would be able to understand. I mean, certainly there are days where the teacher has to say there's no recess today because the weather's too lousy. That could include, we can't have a snack today because the weather's too lousy. I think most, I mean, I get that we don't want children to have to go five hours without having some sort of snack. That's not what we want, but that wouldn't be happening every day. And I think that what we want more than their feeling relatively full is for them to be healthy and safe. So I, I, um, you know, I, I do think that, I like Jen's suggestion a lot, that maybe we, as we discuss this further, we will decide that there's a way to, um, address the issue of eating in the classroom and of mask breaks, a way that will focus on the safety and health of the kids. I mean, it's ideal, obviously, for kids to have snacks and they're, it's awful, the idea of, you know, they won't, they won't, maybe won't listen to the teacher as well if they're hungry. I mean, I, I get all that, but on the other hand, you know, it's not as though they're going to go days without food. They're going to be home in an hour or two and they can then eat. So I, I, I feel like their health and safety has to be prioritized. Again, being the outlier, but, I mean, in terms of making things a little bit more complicated and I do apologize. But let's focus on the guidelines. I, I like Jen's suggestions. Leave it a little bit broader so that we can, um, work on, you know, the details. What does everybody else think?
Anybody? All right. Would you like to vote tonight or do you want to wait till the next meeting and get this ironed out a little bit more?
So we have, we do have two more, um, questions around face masks.
Okay.
Pam Booth, thirty-five Vineyard Place. Those kids in foundations, life skills, et cetera, are going to start school full days on four days. Full days on four days, so they will be eating lunch at school. How is this going to be handled, particularly in light of this mask discussion?
I have no idea. Who does know this?
They're actually eating lunch at school, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I think this was the point that Jen had brought up. Every, there's, there's so many different situations depending on the grade level, the circumstances of the child, the building. And so maybe all the kids will be having a snack in the school socially distanced. Maybe they won't, you know, but these are, these are details that are going to have to be worked out, but they're going to have to be more specific to the circumstances, I think.
Yeah, I, I know this is, you know, again, from the CPAC Town Hall, from the, the special ed meetings we've been in, that this level of detail is, is what, you know, special services team is working through. So I, I wouldn't want to, you know, project anything and certainly the person who asked the question, um, i- is in a lot of those as well. So I, I'm, I'm confident that the special services team is working through those details at the building level and at the program level and will, will come up with an appropriate solution that we can discuss further when we see it.
There are also a lot less students in the buildings during that time and a lot more space to utilize.
Yeah, I would imagine, again, you know, totally projecting, I would imagine that if, if the classroom space is not adequate, that there's plenty of other space that they could spread out in and bring the students to for, you know, a change of scenery and safely, um, eating, taking a break, coming back.
And we did have somebody else ask a question about inclement weather. Again, I think that's probably more building specific. Um, and also that, uh, another person said that their six-year-olds can eat with a mask on and that they don't think that their child is unique to that.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be picky, but you have to read the name and.
Okay, so Darlene Hannigan, five Pebblebrook Road. If the K to two children are having lunch and snack in school, how will this not happen on inclement weather days? And then, um, so I think that that's more building specific, um, as just stated. And then Lauren Loomis, for Abbey Road, my six-year-old is great with eating while he's still wearing his mask. I don't think he is one of a kind. I do think it's crazy for a K to two kid to not eat a snack in, in the morning.
I agree with that. I have a hard time with that. Which I've said repeatedly, to have little kids in school or anyone in school without some kind of accommodation. They're able to eat in a restaurant. I, I understand Caroline, I know that it's not perfect, but you, you, from a teacher's perspective, you can't not let kids eat or drink for five hours and expect them to be productive. That's not productive learning. So.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I agree that's not ideal at all, but I don't think it necessarily means you could never have that happen, just as you sometimes, for various reasons, have to change the routine for a particular day. I mean, because of inclement weather, whatever. I just think, I mean, Jen made some good suggestions about maybe we can find a way to create the sort of space that would make it safer. But I, I still am prioritizing, you know, the, the health and safety of the whole class over an individual child being a little bit hungry on a particular day because they can't go outside. I mean, that, I just am seeing it differently, uh, obviously. And, you know, that happens all the time. We see things differently, so.
But the, but I think these are the details that are going to need to be worked out. It's just, they're not the details that need to be in this overarching policy.
Right, no.
I don't think it's necessarily that we're not involved in working on the guidelines maybe as well, but.
I think we should be. Maybe the administration won't want.
To each school. The guidelines will be specific to each school.
I have to leave for a second.
And they will be obviously drinking water throughout the day as well, so we can't tell them, you know, we're not going to tell the kids they can't drink water throughout the day.
All right, so where are we?
Right back where we started.
All right.
So, okay, I would be, I would be comfortable voting on, you know, the, the policy as amended, um, tonight or, or waiting. I don't, again, I don't think there's a rush to have this in place before people start entering the buildings.
So the plans that are coming out on the twenty-seventh are going to address these issues. Is that correct, Alicia?
Yeah, they address, uh, e- everything that's in the building plan, they're even, I mean, excuse me, the district plan. They're using the same template and they're just making them more specific. So everything you see in that plan, whether it's talking about the ventilation systems or entry and dismissal or meals, they're going to be discussing at the, um, school level. And Chrissy, I don't know if that means there's two questions or if she was just wishing us all peace or, I don't know.
But we have a whole agenda here and I'm not trying to push this off. And I know there's a hundred, probably a hundred people that want to ask something. This is a policy that talks about face coverings in general throughout the school on the school day. And I think, if, I think we should vote with the amendments, this is my personal feeling, as they are, and get into the guidelines for each specific area, each school, each cohort, each, you know, CPAC, uh, Phys Ed, whatever. So that's up to you guys, but I really would like to move on. I would like to pass this face coverings and if we have to come back and fix it, then we'll come back and fix it. So I'm going to make a motion to accept this face coverings policy with the corrections. Does anybody want to second me? If not, we're moving on.
Nancy, I, I just, are we including in the correction eliminating those three bullet points? Okay, good. Okay, I'll, I'll second for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes?
I, I just need to confirm what the changes are very quickly.
Okay.
That we're taking out that comma after circumstances.
At the top, face coverings, on the third paragraph down, get rid of the comma after circumstances. The, uh, sentence that starts with face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced pursuant to the guidelines. Delete the three bullet points. And then in the third, from the bottom paragraph, get rid of, uh, the, from the to or and change may to will.
Perfect. Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do, I, can I just read one comment? Valerie Frank, one fifty-eight Elm, said our older child's school mandates water bottles with straws to go up inside masks for drinking. Dry snacks can be eaten with masks on if kids hand wash before and after. There are solutions to these issues that don't involve kids being hungry.
Thank you very much. Those are all good points. I think everybody has kind of found the best way to work with them, not the best way maybe, but have found ways to work with the mask in our everyday life and I appreciate that comment. That's awesome. Okay, uh, number four. What? Do you have a question, Caroline? What?
She's on mute now. Go ahead.
Sorry. Not lying. Discussion and possible vote to enter into a reciprocal agreement with districts for attendance of school-aged children or staff. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so this is actually sort of a two-part question. Uh, the first is, well, to, to set this up, we do have significant childcare issues for our staff, of course. Um, if schools are not opening, if, um, we don't have students, uh, children who are school-aged children. And so while we're certainly not responsible for our employees' childcare, we are sensitive to the fact that that is important to them. We want to have happy staff that is here, um, and fully present and not worried about their children. So we are trying to come up with some solutions. One suggestion is, um, to allow all staff children who attend the Easton Public Schools to attend on both cohorts so that they can be here for four or five days a week, um, and really helping our staff in terms of having that coverage. We also, of course, have worked with the YMCA in Maplewood, who will be offering not only before and after-school care, but also during the day, even for remote learners. So if someone's child goes to a different district, they can have supervision while they're remote learning. So that's sort of one part of it, is that we are requesting that you will, you know, it's, it's not necessarily a policy, but we are, I think it's wise to bring it before you and have you weigh in on that. The second part of it is that the commissioner has been working on potentially creating a statewide agreement of this sort based on urging by, uh, superintendents for this exact reading. Our staff are essential to schools opening and so it's, um, to determine that school staff are essential personnel. And just like first responders who were determined to be essential personnel, got first dibs on childcare, for example, to consider that employees of public schools would be the same in the sense that we would allow the same consideration that I just described for Easton educators for other districts. So for example, if a, if one of our, uh, teachers, excuse me, if one, if one of our students has a parent that works in Mansfield as a teacher or any, pick, you know, pick your town in Massachusetts, that we would agree that that student, because their parent is a, an education, um, essential employee, that they could attend on the number, on the full number of days, both cohorts. It would be space permitting, of course, um, but we could certainly look at that and entertain that option. Uh, we could also, uh, we've also talked about creating the opportunity for those students to, if, if they're in a remote model, for example, for our own students, if they're in, if they're in a hybrid model and they're in Cohort A, in order to, um, a, a parent might not have a problem with their child going all days A and B into the classroom, but if they did, we could create learning centers where the students are spaced as usual. Uh, they're supervised by school staff and they're completing their remote work or they're remoting into Cohort B, for example, from this space. And so they're only with the other students who were in Cohort A, who are also doing Cohort A and B thereby, minimizing any extra exposure, for example. So there are things that we can do to make that happen. Um, but I just want to bring that before you. They could be considered as separate items, but certainly we are not able to, um, function unless we have our staff present if they have significant childcare issues. So it really, um, not only is it something that we feel is very important for our staff members to give them that feeling of security about their children, but we, it, it will help us as well. And so for any employee, uh, whether they're food service, a paraprofessional, a teacher, what have you, that if their children are of school age and are enrolled in the Easton Public Schools, that they could attend for both cohorts. And then a separate issue is, um, space permitting, which we may have more space in second grade than we do in third grade, for example. So space permitting based on the grade level at the school, we could make a reciprocal agreement. Now, the reason I called it a reciprocal agreement with other superintendents is because I don't know if that will pass on the state level. We have three hundred and fifty-one communities in the Commonwealth, you know, to get everybody on board. It may be a very different situation in, out, out west or on the Cape or on the North Shore than it is here. And so I have been in communication with our regional superintendents and there are a number of them that are interested in this reciprocal agreement. And so we could have a, a list of districts that we provide to our staff to let them know if you work here and your children go to X public schools, that school is willing to let your student attend for both cohorts and hope thereby hopefully easing their childcare concerns. It's again, part of our efforts in addition to before and after care and during school care to mitigate some of the concerns that our staff and certainly parents of, um, our children that we have in our school, um, the concerns that they have as well.
Okay, so if a teacher is from another town, their children wouldn't, or a, a staff member, their children wouldn't be coming to Easton, they would be in their own town. In their own.
Child stays in their home district.
Town, okay, so.
So if we have a staff member whose children, say we had, I'm going to use Mansfield as an example because it's one of our neighbors. If we have a staff member who lives in Mansfield, our staff member comes to work and their children are allowed to attend both cohorts in Mansfield. If, or high needs, because for example, even in Mansfield's remote model, all, all their high needs students are going in and other students are going in. Their remote is, is different than what we're calling remote. And vice versa, if we have, um, students who, um, if we have an educator in a different district and their children go here, space permitting. space permitting, we would allow their children to be here for both cohorts so that they can go to work and their students can have childcare as well.
Okay. Questions, anyone? Comments? Chrissy, you have a question on the Q and A?
Yes, I have one regarding this topic. Nellie Brennan Hall, 35, Shady Rest Road. How would we let the schools know that we are employees of other school districts? Would both parents need to be employees of a school district or just one? Are administrators also included in this?
I don't know how, what the protocol would be if this, if the commissioner does this at the state level, but with my colleagues in the region, for those that are interested in participating, we have actually already started a Google Doc and we are listing whether we would be interested in participating or not. Everyone's consulting with their school committees. And if so, we would then send a survey to all of our staff. And in that survey, they would tell us about their school-aged children. How many? What are their ages and grades? And what school do they go to? And theoretically, it's possible that even if we aren't in a reciprocal agreement with the district, if there is a singleton perhaps in another district, maybe they're further away and they're not in our region. I certainly could reach out to that superintendent and see if that would be allowable. But not unless we provide that for others. And so that's why we're asking you to entertain this. The other question was administrators, it would be any employee, and there was something else, I'm sorry.
Would both parents need to be employees of a school district or just one?
No. Just one.
I have a question about, so public school staff should be essential personnel as we return to school. What, what were the parameters for the essential personnel before, when they could get daycare or whatever? Did they have to do something special, or did, was?
That wasn't for public, yeah, that wasn't for public schools because we were all closed. That, that analogy I made was for daycare centers. They were allowed to open only to accept essential employees' children. They couldn't accept anyone else's children.
So that would be the, hopefully, the same thing for teachers, that like the Y would take, you know, Easton Public School staff at the Y, their kids at the Y because they would be deemed essential workers. That's all I'm asking, because like when the nurses and doctors went back, somebody, you know, helped them out there. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
We have one in the box, Joanna Silverman, 62 Peterson Road. Would this include educators from collaboratives?
Perhaps. It may depend if we're a member of that collaborative or not, and it will depend on space. But we would certainly, we would look into that.
Anybody else have a question? Okay. So right now, we're going to vote to enter into a reciprocal agreement with districts for attendance of school-aged children of staff. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, reopening update, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so as you're all aware, we had some important documents go out this week. You know, a lot of this is, well, all of it's frustrating to everyone. However, a lot of that is because we have a lot of chicken and egg stuff going on. People would like to know, people would like, for example, people want to know the plan before we know how many students are coming in. We need to know how many students are coming in before we know what plan we can offer. People want to know what cohorts their students are going to be in and what schedule they're going to have. We need to know how many students are coming in before we can make cohorts and balance the classes as opposed to how many students are working remotely. So I completely understand the frustration. We're sharing it. None of us, not us, and not parents, none of us is going to have the full docket of information that we need to make the decision because one part needs the other part in order to come together. So we're doing the very best we can. We understand that the information we've gotten may be a little bit off because of that, but that's okay because not only did we, you know, I'm confident that the information we received, the majority of the responses are what people's wishes are at this time. But it also matched almost exactly with the information in our first survey. So it basically validated the first survey's information. So now after doing two, we're starting to build some longitudinal data. It's not a huge history, but they certainly, the fact that they align was encouraging and validating. So I will say that at first we had, which is interesting, we have not totally disaggregated the data yet. So we still have to do that, of course, but I had some parents who were extremely concerned about their decision because they wanted to have the special education meeting yesterday. I'm not sure we provided any new information yesterday that would help with the decision, but if it made them feel more comfortable, certainly that's value, very valuable. And so we felt that that was fair, and so people have handed some in, excuse me, submitted the information today. So the most current information that I looked at, actually, at the very beginning of this meeting, was we have 3,616 responses. Not families, but responses, which is interesting because that's actually more children than we have. So we did a cursory search and saw that some people answered more than once, which is okay because we know when it was turned in and we can use the most current version, presuming they changed their mind or made a mistake or wanted to augment the information that they had. It's also possible that some of those students are pre-registered or pre-kindergarten that we have not put into our registration system yet. So there are a few possibilities of why that's happened. The biggest and most important point, I think, is that we have, if we don't have every response, we are pretty darn close to it. And so that was extremely encouraging, and we cannot thank families enough for doing that. I know it was difficult. I feel for every one of you for having to make such a difficult decision. It can be, you know, we can make changes as we go along at certain points. So it isn't like promising for an entire year, which, which many districts are doing. If someone goes remote, it's for the year or until the district changes it. So, so I do appreciate those responses very much. They're, they're helping us a great deal. Of that, it, excuse me, 82.4% or 2,975 children have been slated to return to the hybrid model. I realized that there was a little bit of chatter about, you know, saving a spot per se. Even if that is five percentage points, we clearly have the vast majority. We have well over 2,000 students that are anticipated to come back. We had 339 requests for remote learning out of over 3,500 students. And we had 4.3%, say, or 154 students that they were putting in for remote but want to go back to in-person at some point in the year. The other document, I have so many notes in front of me, excuse me. The other document that we put out was for staff members. That actually closes this evening. So, but everybody, again, we're just so appreciative that the response was quick. We have put out the call to please answer us if you can, and they were fantastic. So we really thank our staff for doing that as well. On that, they were able to request the opportunity to discuss appropriate accommodations, which could potentially include a remote learning of some kind. We had, it was for all staff. We have approximately 580 staff. Of all staff, we had 32 asked to be considered for a remote placement. And 17 ask for an enhanced accommodation. An enhanced accommodation can include many things, and certainly we're willing to work. We want to work with our employees to make sure that they're comfortable and safe. It could be, for example, a shield in addition to a mask, a plexiglass divider. It could be many, many things. And there are things that we maybe haven't even thought of. So I'm actually having an individual meeting with the payroll supervisor and each of these employees individually and remotely all of next week. So we will be able to assist them, tell them what is available under federal law, under ADA allowances and so forth. And, you know, document what these accommodations are, just so that we can make sure that they're implemented correctly, that we can then share those documents with all schools, all schools administrators, so that they can make sure that they are providing those appropriate accommodations for staff. I will say that a quick breakdown of the approximately 580, of those 32 requests for remote assignments, 19 of them were in what we call Unit A. So that would include, that would include teachers, that would include counselors, guidance, nurses, all of our professional staff. We had four of those requests from paraprofessionals and nine were other. And other could be any one of our other units, could be an administrator, custodian, food service, secretary clerical. Could be, it could be any of our employees. So as I said, I'm going to meet with each one individually so we can find out exactly what it is they need and help them the best that we can. Again, let them know it's available and we can see how we'll proceed. So we're hoping to get all those done in that one week. But every case is so unique. I don't know if anyone out there is in HR, but the laws and the emergency laws that have been put in place and and ADA accommodations and different contract, different contracts allow for different leaves and times. So we want to make sure that every employee is not just given blanket information and reams of paper of policies, but that we actually sit down with them and try to explain how we, what we feel or what we are seeing might be available to them. And then, of course, providing that documentation and having them research it themselves and feel comfortable with it. But it's really, it's just so much to go through that it would, it would practically be insurmountable for somebody to determine what even applies to them. And so we're just trying to help them with that. So we will do that all through next week. The other items on the student family form that I thought might be of interest, the family decision form, was that over 65%, just about 66% of parents said that they would not be utilizing school transportation, whether that's buses or vans. That is actually going to be very helpful to us in terms of social distancing on the buses. That is actually more than we anticipated. So we are hoping that we are going to be able to bus everyone safely and effectively with the extra guidelines that we put in place. It is going to potentially create traffic issues, but all of the principals are aware of it. And it's possible that, especially after the first day or the first week, that they revisit that, their intake policies and their dismissal policies, and they either utilize different parts of the building or they have staggered times. All of those are much, much more flexible now that we're in this state of emergency. The Commissioner of Education has told us that there are some very specific areas that we can make modifications to time on learning. And so, for example, intake typically can only take a certain amount of time, but we can stagger that to account for different times of arrival of students and different time of dismissal of students. And so the bus times will remain the same always, especially with the lower ridership. We feel confident that we are going to be able to load and unload students without incident. We can do that with social distancing. We've talked to both vendors about their cleaning protocols and we're very satisfied with them. They are, we've asked them to bring them up to be the same as ours in the schools. And even the way they're loading the bus, when they are leaving school, they are loading from the back to the front. When they're getting off, they're unloading from the front to the back and so forth. So we are thinking that we are not going to need extra buses, which was extremely concerning to us. Not only because we don't have it in our budget and we can't afford it, but because our vendor doesn't have extra buses available for us. So if we had to double, we currently utilize 17 buses for all of our routes in three tiers. If we needed to get more, that would have been impossible. Right now, we think we're going to operate with exactly the 17 we have. So while there's not necessarily going to be a savings, there certainly is hopefully not going to be any extra incurred expense. So we're taking a look at that. And the last chart that I wanted to share with you was, you know, we've been referring to these students that have had a very difficult time. Certainly, we have some anecdotal information, some research, but also calls and emails from parents that have expressed that to us. On this survey, we asked if you would like a member of the counseling staff to contact you regarding any social emotional concerns you have for your child. And 15.5% or 561 said that they did. We have created a spreadsheet and disseminated that information to the counseling staff at all schools. And they've already, actually, days ago, they started reaching out to those families already. Before we even got to this number, I think we're in the 300s, they had already started reaching out to families. So every one of those families will be contacted by a member of our counseling staff. We want to get ahead of issues that they might have, and we want to make sure that they're well-prepared for when they come to school and that we can make sure that if they need some outside services or something ready for them when they come into school, that we'll be aware of that. Chrissy, were you going to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I ask families that if you, if you did check that off, to please bear with us as our counseling staff isn't officially working yet. And they are taking, they're taking this on, they take it very seriously, and it may take some time to get to every person, so to every, to every family. So please, we ask for your patience.
Yes, and we have 10 professional development days between September 1st and September 16th. And we have expressed to the counseling staff that that would be very valuable time, that they certainly could use that during some of that time, they could be contacting families. So people could be contacted literally all the way up to September 16th. We're not going to stop until everybody is, has been reached. And I think that's the information I have from those two documents. Are there any questions about that before I go on? Okay. I also wanted to let you know that today is the last day of our extended school year program. We had 27 students participate in this program during the summer and several staff members, of course. And it was wonderful to see students be so excited to see their friends, to see their teachers. It went very well. It was successful. We followed the protocols that we're utilizing for school and we had zero incidents of suspected cases of anything, illness, dismissals, nothing. So we're very happy to report that. And, and I credit Teresa Skinner and her team a great deal for putting that together. That was. For putting that together. That was one of those items that as school was ending, we were getting really patchy information. Um, from the state at the time of how to run the extended school year program. And so, you know, you have to remember this, this went, this happened before we even had our district plan or a lot of the guidance from the state. And so they had the foresight of, um, really putting together a program that was well-run, well-received and safe for everyone. And the last piece of information I have is that. We have finally had the last school completed for our, um, engineering. Um, review of every building for, uh, ventilation. We have the list, um, of items that we are going to address. I spoke to the DPW and we have some items that, um. One of, a, a different engineering firm will, or an, an engineering, excuse me, an energy management firm. Will be, uh, making some adjustments and then the DPW will be doing the rest. They are preparing a schedule where, uh, they, they know that obviously these need to be completed in time. For the buildings to have people in them. So they, um, are putting together a schedule of. When each of those things is going to be done, like in an anticipated date of completion. Overall, they feel very confident that they're all within our power to fix. They're all things that we are able to do with, um. The funding that we have and the staff that we have and, um. Certainly to be done in time, but, um, I would like to know. Which days those things will be completed and which buildings, so that we can, um. Push that out to the public. And so they're going to be working on, or they are working on that. And as soon as we have it, we'll release that information as well. But it was very comforting, comforting and validating to know that these peoples, um, some of which have children in our schools. Um, and they of course are in our schools all the time, that they were, um, very encouraged by the information we got from the. Engineering firm and that they felt that they should be able to get everything done, no problem. But of course, we want that documented and so they're putting that together for us and we will release it as soon as we have it. And I believe that's it. We have a cabinet meeting tomorrow, uh, so we will be. Talking about the building plans in more detail. Chrissy and I will be getting a debrief of what they've been working on with their staff all this week. We have seen some documents going around and there's been a great deal of progress. They really needed to see our plans, as I said earlier. If you take a look at my plan or our plan that I wrote, but we put it together, uh, as a team. The format that I used, they're going to use the same format. Now, obviously, some things don't apply. So for example. Um, the executive summary of the whole plan, they're not going to be writing an executive summary of their school. Uh, the, uh, letter from the superintendent. It's optional if they would like to write a letter from the principal, they can, but many of them do that as part of their welcoming package, so. It may not have that. Um, the data, I shared this data from the first survey. They obviously won't be sharing that. Uh, that stuff's not, that, that's, that's a higher level conversation. But when we get to things like the transportation, uh, where drop-off and pickup will be. Where, what will be one-way hallways, uh, what classrooms are going to be utilized? And what is the spacing going to look like? And how will they do meal breaks? And all of those things that now are going to be different. Depending on the physical structure of the building and the staff and the age of the students and developmental appropriateness and so forth. All of those will be filled in and, uh, as I said. A lot of those things they knew were coming because they saw the iterations of the district plan as they were taking place. And so it's, it's a matter of meeting with their staff, similar to what we did, meeting with district staff. To just plug in those specifics, get that finished as a document and then push it out to everyone. Certainly, nothing is going to be below the standards of the district. It will be more specific. So when we talk about different cleaning protocols, for example, or disinfection schedules. If anything, it would be more than that. It's certainly not going to be anything less than that. So that's important to note. The district sets the parameter and then the buildings then discuss how that's going to happen in their specific school because. Staff and parents need to know precisely what door do I go in and what time. You know, if I'm driving my student, what time, what window do I have to drop them off and, and things of that nature. So those are getting completed. Again, well, I, I can't tell you the level of completion. I know that a lot of work has been done, but tomorrow we'll get a full debrief. And I'll be able to give you more information next week. And. Believe I had one more item.
Chrissy, can I, I just want to add in that, um. For example, in one of the schools in particular, they actually shot a model classroom today. Um, they, they, it's, it's going to be an embedded video in their plan. Where there is a teacher, there is a facilitator, there are students in the classroom, students on the Google Meet. So, uh, family member can, can actually envision before their child goes to school what that would look like. Um, so I think things like that, that are embedded in plans are extremely helpful. And, um, there's just more information and those will be coming out to families next week.
Um, I think even, we've encouraged every school to make use of videos. Visuals are a lot more. Um, accessible to people. They certainly drive things home better than something written can be. And, and definitely in terms of the children, um, you know, telling a child what their classroom is going to look like and having them see it is, is a big difference. I'm hearing that their teacher, their teacher's going to, or their principal's going to wear a mask and seeing what their principal looks like with a mask. Is very different. So they're putting together all of that information as well and, um, we'll be able to share that, uh, in the coming days. Any questions?
Chrissy, are there any questions on the Q and A about this?
Uh, they can wait until public comment.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Okay, well, thank you. I know the meetings that I've been in, um, it's, they're going gangbusters and it's, uh. You know, just really moving along and people seem excited and I know families are so ready to have their kids. Face to face with their teachers. So I'm glad to hear that the survey went well. Anyone else have a comment or a question before we move on? All right. Good job, Dr. Cabral. Next up is the budget update. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Marilyn is here, uh, and I think, um. There really hasn't been a significant change to the budget. Um, I don't know if. The, so Marilyn Gordon, of course, the director of finance, um, if you have, uh, information about the grants. Uh, any updated information about grants?
I just, I do just have one thing, the, um, official, we did get official word. About the Remote Learning Technologies Essential Grant and, um, we, uh, they.
I'm sorry, my eyes opened because that information was embargoed.
It's, it's unembargoed.
I've been very busy today, so I didn't see that that wasn't. Unembargoed, so my apologies. Go right ahead. My apologies.
You, you missed that email.
I did. That's not a surprise.
So we did get a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, and that's pretty good because, well, they, they allocated thirty-two million, but they, I guess they, they. Had ninety-three million in requests, two, two hundred and fifty-three proposals received. So I thought we did pretty well with that. So what, so what we'll probably do with that, oh, we'll, what we'll probably do with that is. Move, we bought a lot of Chromebooks, which, another good news today. Um, I guess we had a big shipment arrive today and, um, we'll probably. Take a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of those Chromebooks and charge it right off to that grant and then free up money. In the, uh, one oh two COVID relief grant, which has more flexibility of things that we can charge.
And in that grant also are some hotspots for families that might need, um, assistance with, um.
Connectivity.
Broad connectivity, yes.
So that's all I really have.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any questions for Marilyn?
Thank you. Okay, public comment, Chrissy.
Sure. So there's two questions so far. The first is from Holly Butler, nine two seven Washington Street. Are children being offered breakfast in school?
Yes.
Okay, next, the next one is Lauren Loomis for Abbey Road. Any possibility the budget can be repurposed, which would have been used for transportation?
That's a great question. Um, unfortunately, while the ridership is decreased. We still need the same number of buses because we're spreading the students out across the buses. So for example, a bus that would typically have eighty, I think the capacity is like eighty-four students. Uh, we're only going to be putting twenty-five to twenty-seven students. So we still need the same number of buses.
And the, the revenue that we would, might have received from pay and ride will, will no longer exist.
Right. So it's actually a loss of revenue, unfortunately.
That's it.
Okay, um, superintendent notes.
I can't remember the other item, but I will come back to you if I can. Um, other than that, I just want to again. Express my appreciation to not only everyone that's working on all of our subgroups. But, uh, just the parents for their questions for, for attending the special education town hall yesterday, which was really well-attended. And we appreciate that. For watching the school committee meetings, we're, we're typically used to having two people in the audience and. We're seeing that, that a lot more people are watching them. I, I know that they're long and, you know, we're sorry for that. Uh, but there's a lot of information we have to share, certainly, obviously with the school committee to make sure they're making. Uh, educated choices for your children. So we really appreciate that you are watching them, that you're sharing the information. Um, we appreciate our staff and all the work that they've been doing and for, for, um. Completing the, uh, accommodation forms as they did. Um, I'm thankful to the central office. Staff that has been present, um, and they're working hard to try to get things ready for schools. I really, uh, appreciate the support that the school committee has provided as well. Again, not just in, um. Proposals that we bring to your attention, but the fact that, again, all five of you are participating in our back-to-school. Um, groups and we're talking thirty to forty meetings per week. Um, you know, Chrissy and I are, are pretty much attending almost all of them, but. Many of you are attending multiple and many of our staff members are attending multiple, so we appreciate that. We are, um, just. Very thankful because when we say it, it takes a village, it really does. And we would not have gotten as far as we have without it. There's a lot more information that still needs to come out. We realize that. It's not for a lack of effort or for a lack of understanding what we're going to do. It's just that these things have to be written down. Um, after they're discussed, they have to be written down. They have to be, um, proofed by people. Some things have to go through the board of health. Some things have to go through the department of education. Some things have to go through our, our leadership team. Some things have to go through subgroups. Or, um, bargaining units or different, um, levels of staff or grade levels to check and say, does this really work? And, you know, we just, certainly Chrissy and I could sit down and pump out everything. But would it be good? Would it work? Would it, would it have every lens? Um, put on it to really see things from multiple perspectives and would it be quality? And, and we don't believe that's true, so, um. We, we very much appreciate the patience. I know it creates hardships for people. We're looking for ways to mitigate any hardships, um, in any way that we can. But I think that people will see that the result is going to be a better, stronger, more collaborative plan. In the long run and, um, for the safety of our students and our staff, I think that that is, um. That's paramount. Ultimately, that's paramount for all of us. Um, and unfortunately, in these crazy times, that's, that's how we're having to complete it. So. We just, uh, I just wanted to express that appreciation again.
We do have one, we do have one more comment in the Q and A.
Go ahead.
Lauren Loomis, um, I think it was Abbey Road. I can go back and look at, uh, anyway. Um, actually, let me follow protocol and do that for Abbey Road. Um, she said, "Thank you. I am a stepmother in another district and a mother in Easton. I'm so impressed with the transparency. And collaboration that is happening here. We are so lucky in Easton."
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay, assistant superintendent notes.
I just wanted to add on to what Dr. Cabral said about, um, the. We, everybody's been working hard, as you know, every, uh, however, I want to thank all of the parents in advance. Um, when school does open, we will not be perfect and we do not expect to be perfect. Um, although we strive for perfection and we know we're very real, realistic in understanding that this is, that, that. Perfection will not occur on day one. Um, and so we thank all the families in advance for their understanding and cooperation. Um, and, and empathy. Um, and also, you know, I just continue to advocate. That if you do have concerns or questions, because like Dr. Cabral said, they're extremely important and. It could be a detail that we left out. Please communicate with your children's teachers or your building principals. Um, or feel free to contact, contact us as well. Um, but the teachers and, and building principals might know more specific details than we may, we may, um, be privy to. So I just wanted to share that and again, thank you everyone for all the support. It has been quite a summer, to say the least. No, I looked at the calendar. I was like, oh my gosh, it's the twentieth. By the way, today is my grandfather's one hundred seventh birthday. I know I announced it yesterday, uh, last week, but today it is.
Birthday.
Yes, and, um, but it's been, it's been quite a summer and I do hope that all the families and staff, um, have been able to have some breaks and time off. And been, been able to enjoy, uh, what, what we know to, summer can bring. So, thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Um, school committee notes, Caroline.
Maybe, maybe skip.
Okay. All right, Michelle.
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, Jackie. Jackie, no?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Jen?
Uh, just wanted to, um, thank the CPAC and special services department for putting on. A really wonderful town hall yesterday. I know there were, um, a lot of outstanding questions among the special ed parents. Um, and, and some information that they felt they needed before they could make their decision, uh, for their family, so. Um, really appreciate Teresa Skinner and Dr. Cabral. Um, a-attending and being able to answer so many questions. The meeting lasted, I believe, almost two hours. I think we had over sixty participants at one point. Um, and, um, uh, Rachel Alterman from the CPAC, um, helped host and pulled together that agenda. So thank you to her as well. I know there were a lot of, um, a, a lot of. Families who participated who were new to the CPAC, which is wonderful. So we're glad that, um, they're, you know, that they're. Information is getting out there, that people are finding them, um, as a resource. They've been hugely helpful with coordinating with. Um, special services department through the summer with helping. Um, prioritize and, and organize family concerns and get feedback out in a really efficient way. Um, and they're, they're just do a great job, uh, liaising with, with families, um, and working with, um, with administration and staff. So it was really, really well done. Uh, I believe there, you know, plans for more. Um, for more updates, uh, more frequent communication coming from Teresa Skinner, who's been reaching out pretty frequently already. Um, and, and again, some discussion about, uh, offering some district-wide resources to families. About things to expect as we reopen school and, and, and start the school year. So be on the lookout for, uh, for more information and resources, um, that will be shared as, as plans become more concrete.
Thank you, Jen. How are you doing? I, I started my first face mask, Jen.
Oh, tedious, right?
Are you sewing?
I'm making those face masks.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
I'm trying, I'm trying. Caroline, do you have anything?
I apologize. I apologize before my, um, my iPad actually tumbled to the floor because it wasn't sufficiently secured. So that's why I, I heard everything. I was just, I had to quickly get out of the video and the, um, audio. Uh, I just really want to mention, I know that this has been alluded to before, but, uh. Dr. Cabral and, um, Chrissy Pruitt. Honestly, I've never seen two people work so hard for so long in such an absolutely dedicated fashion. Um, in any endeavor and I, I think that people just have no idea. How many, many hours, how much. how many, many hours, how much thought, I mean, they are living and breathing this really, really challenging um requirement that they find a way to continue to provide a strong educational program for all of our children. And obviously, the reason all of us are here is because of our children and of course, our families and staff. But um I, I just want to really let people know that you can't even imagine how hard the two of them are working. And again, I think I made this plea last week. If you have a question, my suggestion would be that you contact the building principal first because um Dr. Cabral at this point has literally thousands and thousands of emails that at this point, they can't even be sorted. She's trying her best to respond to them when she can even find them, but the whole, it's, you know, it doesn't even make sense to email the superintendent of schools in many cases because the answers to the questions would um really better come from principals or perhaps, you know, other individuals. So I do uh make that plea again, that people reach out to principals instead of to Dr. Cabral or to uh Chrissy Pruitt. Um anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Okay, um so one thing I do wanna ask and I, we may, I may have missed this before, but I don't think so. So usually in October, we have a professional status reception, which I don't think we will, but we'll see. Do we have teachers or staff that are receiving professional status this year? Has that been changed because of, you know, our remote learning? What's the update on professional status?
So we do have uh principals sending that information to, it's, it's professional status for those that are not um familiar with that is that anyone who is um certified by the state of Massachusetts is entitled to what's called professional teaching status. Doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher, but that's what it's called. Uh after three full and completed years of service and at the recommendation of their building principal um and supported by the superintendent. Every year um or in, in October, we actually uh have a, a small ceremony to celebrate that staff. And um it really is, it really is a recognition that that staff member is part of the Easton family, uh hopefully permanently. That the, the trial run, so to speak, has been um completed, that they have had three successive years of evaluations and development and professional development and the district has um determined that they are of professional status. And so we celebrate that, that is something that honestly I've never had in a district. It's a wonderful tradition that Easton has. Uh we meet in person in the OA Cafeteria, we have a, a ceremony for them. Colleagues come, family members come, i- it's a great recognition. We are not certain if we will have that in person this year. Um I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head how many we have recommended for professional status at this point, that certainly would make a difference. But we do not have a date for it, we're gonna wait and see. Uh but we do have some recipients, so if we are unable to have that ceremony in person, we certainly will determine a, a suitable alternative to really celebrate that achievement of, of those professionals.
Thank you, I was, I just happened to be thinking about that and, you know, it's kind of a bright spot in the year.
Yes.
Um, okay, and our next meeting is going to be August twenty-fifth at five PM because we've all been invited to, hold on, I'm gonna say this incorrectly if I don't read it, to a um mass support back-to-school town hall with um speakers Nicole Christian Brathwaite, MD, Robert Macy, PhD, will present information on coping skills and mindfulness, the effects of stress and trauma on children's brains, regress behavior and grief and loss associated with COVID-nineteen. So um that's something that we're all interested in attending, but if we have our school committee meeting that night, we can't. So we're moving our school committee meeting to August twenty-fifth at five o'clock. Um and Lynn will have to post this agenda quickly because it's Thursday, we're gonna meet Tuesday. So agenda items I have so far, of course, are the Lucini bus contract, maybe the building plans, but they're not due until what, the twenty-seventh? Okay, right, okay, so maybe not. Uh again, reopening update, and if anybody else has, if anyone else has an agenda item they would like to put on, please let Lynn know um uh what, you know, what you would like to put on. Oh, we're also gonna have an executive session, um should we have that at the beginning or at the end? Input? Anybody? Okay, we'll just put it on there and we'll deal with it. Go ahead, Caroline.
I just, I, I might have missed it when I was trying to rescue my iPad, but did you ask Michelle if she had school committee notes?
Uh everybody's already done their notes.
Oh, okay, I, I guess I did.
You were last, because, while you were next to last, because we all, everybody else went ahead of you.
Okay, no, I, I knew that, I, I heard you say that you, that I was missing an action, which I was.
Michelle, do you have anything else you wanted to add in?
No, for some reason, I didn't, I didn't hear Michelle's uh comments, so I apologize for that, okay.
Michelle and Jackie didn't have any, okay.
That's why.
So anyway, that will be our agenda so far and then again, we may be adding to it or whatever. So um thank goodness for Lynn and taking care of all this stuff for us. All right, uh any other Q and As in there, Chrissy? Okay, so I am, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Weisman, so moved.
Thank you, Jen, thank you, Jackie, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes?
Weisman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you on Tuesday.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.